Good, okay. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item is the invocation. If you'll bear with me, we'll, I'll give the invocation. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight on behalf of the town, and we'd like to ask for your guidance and direction in decisions we make tonight. And may everything we say and do be pleasing to you. For it's in your name we pray. Amen. Okay. Item number three is the approval of the January 23rd, 2023 Planning Board Minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review those. Any corrections?
I actually have a question. Since I was here at the last meeting, do I need to recuse myself? Do I need to vote since I wasn't quite here?
I think, I think you probably, you reviewed that?
I have.
And you the, I think that that's right.
That counts.
Yeah.
All right.
Here, no corrections. I get my motion that we approve the board minutes from last meeting.
Jan, approve it.
Can't wait for it.
Can't wait for Thursday.
All right. Motion for approval, is there a second?
I will say two.
Give Mr. Hill a second. All in favor, plus say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carried. On to the regular agenda items. Is that a few, Mary?
Yes.
All right.
Sounds like we're having a funny storm.
I have a quick question. Dave Ian was not here last week. Do you have to vote and does he have to accept it publicly? Does he, that he is accepted invite chair or, or does it not matter?
As long as he is happy with it.
Like for the record?
Yep. Exactly.
Yes, he's aware. If he's present minutes, he would be aware.
Yes. He's very much aware. Absolutely. But that's a great point. That's a good point.
He approved the minutes, so that's an official acceptance.
Reported.
Great, because your friend, my neighbor, he's not here to.
I have good friends. Absolutely. And I welcome the opportunity for sure. So, I don't know what else we need to do for that, but it's a yes.
Fantastic.
Think you approved the minutes, so you're accepted.
I approved the, exactly.
De facto.
Okay. We ready for LDO round four?
I believe so.
Excellent. So, LDO round four, I'll go back to this one for a minute, includes three different text amendments. Trying to breaking them into segments to see if they help us talk about them and digest them better. First is TA 2301. We did talk about that at your January 23rd meeting, and you all had quite a few comments on the notification distance item, and I've brought that back to you with some rewrites. And then adding to round four, I was directed by the town board to update the minimum lot size for the cluster lot in residential medium. So, I have a few items to share with you all with that topic. And then another item that came from the town board, inspired by the school board, as far as I understand, is to pull vape and tobacco shops out as a separate use in our use table and make sure that those shops are at least 1,000 feet away from schools. So, we'll go into more detail on all of these. And first, we'll revisit TA 2301, notification requirements for neighborhood meetings and legislative hearings. So, in section two of the LDO, it notes that we'll follow General Statute 160D. And added to that, and I've put in unless additional requirements are otherwise noted in the Land Development Ordinance Handbook. And in the Land Development Ordinance Handbook, which is Appendix A to the LDO, under rezoning, there is a section about neighborhood meetings. And we talked last month about extending or increasing the notification distance from 200 to 300 feet. And what I got from the discussion and comments from you all, it seemed like most people were in favor of increasing that to 500 feet because that matches what Wake Forest does. And we looked at other municipalities. The notification distance ranges from 100 feet in Raleigh to 800 feet in Cary. Like I said, Wake Forest does 500 feet. So, the other thing you all said last month, so in addition to notifying people not only from the subject property, but from anticipated roadway improvements, you all suggested noting utility improvements, any known utility improvements. So, if you look at the blue text on this slide, we did the 500 feet. So, in addition, the owners of property within 200 feet of any roadway improvements and/or utility improvements associated with an application shall be similarly notified. The other thing you all commented on was to notify homeowners associations. So, we've added a sentence. Homeowners associations shall also be notified if residential properties on a neighborhood meeting mailing list are included in such a notification, in such an association. And it might be easier to read for the legislative hearings. This, this is a new sentence, a proposed sentence for Appendix A, the rezoning section legislative hearing. So, you can see everything together here. The increase to the 500 feet notification distance, 200 feet from roadway and utility improvements, and then notification of homeowners associations if a property or properties on that list are in an HOA. So, how did I do addressing your comments? And I know, Dave Ian, you weren't here. So, we started off by saying we needed to increase the distance from 200 to 300, and then we started talking about more detail, got to the 500 feet. And one thing that was pretty cool, I don't know if you heard this, we had a resident suggest that we notify people or property owners from anticipated roadway improvements. Then you all added to that the anticipated utility improvements.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a quick question.
Sure.
About the homeowners association, the HOA. And I'm perfectly fine with that verbiage that you have as it's written. Just a quick question. So, as far as the HOA goes, do we currently have relationship with HOAs in the area from town to HOA? And that's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is how, I guess, have we done this before? Where we've notified HOA on matters for the town?
So, to answer the first part of your question, do we have relationships with homeowners associations? We keep a table of known homeowners associations. And then I also, I love doing, I pretend like I'm a detective. I like searching online. If we don't have something, I'm typically able to find management companies, HOAs. Can also ask developers for contacts and such. So, yes, we try, we do our best to keep up with the homeowners associations. The list is not perfect. I will not claim that, but we try to keep up with it. And then your, the other part of your question was, is this something we've done before? Not in a formal way. As long as I've been here, I would say in an informal way. Whenever I've developed a relationship with a resident or residence involved in a particular case, and I know that they're involved in a homeowners association, I have reached out to those people and said, can you please share this with your neighbors?
Gotcha.
One thing on the homeowners association, if they have common area of property like an entrance or the stormwater control measures, they will have a tax listing and it will be on the Wake County tax site. So, if.
That makes it easy.
If, if I'm correct, what you said that the, is the developer or the petitioners' responsibility to go out and check that, they should be able to find that when they're searching for those adjoining properties on their, right there. Because, because that's going to be part of something that will show up. And it'll have a agent of record, the property management company or whoever gets the bills on those.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I guess the third part of that question now add on. How are we, how do we ensure that the communication does get communicated in a timely manner? I see that there is a timestamp there of 25 days, et cetera. So, how do we rely on these HOAs to ensure that the communication does get out in a timely matter and it doesn't get missed, lost, delayed?
It's a legal requirement to notify the particular properties at least not before 25 days, not earlier than 25 days before the hearing and not later than 10 days before. And then we have the developer applicant do those mailings for us, and we require them to provide us with documentation of the mailing list, that the mailing was complete. Sometimes they'll do scanned envelopes and send them to us. They send us copies of the letters, et cetera, and we keep those in the, the project file. So, we rely on them.
Question on the envelopes. Because I know a long time ago, there was a complaint by a resident because they got an envelope that was stamped with the home builder, which they took as advertisement and tossed in the trash versus this town. Are we still providing the envelopes for those individuals? So, it's more town information versus the builder?
We have not. We asked them to put the Rollsville Planning Department as the return address for legislative hearing notifications, but not for neighborhood meetings, since the neighborhood meetings are on, on them. But I guess we could probably, I mean, I don't see why I couldn't provide them with a, the template for a sticker that they could print out and put on their.
They were just concerned, I know a couple of residents had turned around and said that, I mean, I get a homeowner or something, I'm not looking at a builder's stuff. I'm not interested in building anything, so I won't even look at it. Versus some sort of official town notice, stamp?
Sure. I like, I like the return address idea. With our logo or something, so it stands out.
And that's all the questions that I had on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'll go back.
I just have one thing in the 2.3F, where we talked about the notification of any, for any roadway improvements and/or utility improvements.
Yes.
I would almost like to see that reworded a little bit to be roadway, utility, and off-site improvements, in case there's something else other than a roadway or utility that, that we're not thinking of.
Okay. I'm writing it down right now.
Just out of curiosity on the utility improvement. So, like on Rollsville Road now, they're putting the water pipe in. So, that water pipe goes from basically, I think, almost the high school and it goes all the way to Callas Falls. So, all the folks on that road would have been notified because you're doing the improvement in front of their houses and it's within 100 feet with that?
Yes, that's how I would read it. I think we were.
That's what I'm thinking about. I just want to make sure that it was like, okay, no, it's just the.
You're making me question, is there, is there a distance that's getting too far away? I guess we're trying to let people know if they're going to experience some disturbance or change.
Yeah, I just think it on the, if it's 100 feet, it would be both sides of the road.
I think we're proposing 200 now with this text amendment.
From that standpoint, it would still be within the, that, depending on the size of the property, because some of the properties there are fairly large, but the property line is at the road. So, if you're digging through my front yard someday in the future or digging up my road, so I couldn't get through like last week, yeah, let me know about it before you do it. Or the worst case is when you have very little property and they're going to be moving some phone lines around and blocking driveways.
I think this would take care of that. And I foresee this kind of being too, because sometimes the utility and roadway improvements are within the right of ways that are not really on your property, but going to dig it in front of your house. And this way, at least the residents would be notified and know what's going on.
Mm-hmm. Another item that is in Appendix A, not related, but just because it's in Appendix A, I threw it in with this. It was a cleanup item that Attorney Dave Neal asked me to get fixed. So, that's all this one is. It's just striking that the applicant shall be precluded from refiling the same or substantially same application for the subject property for a period of six months. And that has to do with a withdrawal. He said that's not a typical thing that happens with a withdrawal. It's usually with a denial of a case that you would wait a period of time before resubmitting. Any other comments on or suggestions for the notification distance? Awesome. All right. Everyone's favorite topic. So.
Cluster.
Yes. So, I have to say, this is not a wholesale redo of cluster development standards in the LDO. This is to address a key concern that I've heard from the town board and the planning board. And that has to do with the minimum lot size in residential medium and the cluster option. So, just to help us visualize, I drove around before lunch today and took a few photos. And this is a home in the Wall Creek subdivision. And it's on a 15,000 square foot lot. And the frontage of this lot is 125 feet. So, if you just want to, you know, get in your head, what is a lot that's 120 feet, 25 feet wide? What does that look like? Here's an example. Next, this is a lot that is 12,000 square feet. And the frontage on this lot is 85 feet wide. So, you can get a sense of what that might feel like. And this is an 8,200 square foot lot that is 70 feet wide. And finally, this is a 6,500 square foot lot that is 50 feet wide. So, I want you to just kind of have the 50-foot width in your mind as we talk about the residential medium development standards. So, when you go to section three of the LDO, this is the table of dimensional standards for the residential medium zoning district. There are by right standards and then there are cluster standards. And right now, the by right minimum lot size in residential medium is 15,000 square feet with an 85-foot wide lot frontage. And right now, the LDO has 5,000 square feet as the minimum lot size for the cluster option. And I have heard comments repeatedly from town board members and from planning board members on the concern of what that 5,000 square foot lot might feel like. And that is quite a drop from the 15,000 square foot by right lot in residential medium. So, the feedback I got from some town board, board members and the mayor was, you know, let's go ahead and change that minimum lot size from 5,000 square feet to 7,500 square feet. And then that, you know, might give us a little more comfort in cluster developments that are coming in after we make this change. And while I was thinking about upping that minimum lot size for cluster developments, I was looking at the side corner setbacks as well as the lot width. And I was thinking, if we're going to up the minimum lot size for cluster development, we should also increase the lot frontage. So, instead of 40 feet, I'm suggesting a 50-foot frontage to go with that 7,500 square foot lot. So, any reactions to this?
I got some pictures. I went around. I'm really opposed to these narrow, narrow lots.
Okay.
Being in the business that I was in, I've seen a lot of these developments. So, one of the issues I have is with stormwater runoff and drainage systems and stormwater management. And I think these are much better with eight-foot side. That would give you 16-foot between the houses. But I believe Chairman Moss told me that it's often, the overhangs aren't included in the setbacks.
Okay.
So, it's the corner of the house, correct? So, if you have a one-foot overhang, you really are getting even closer. So, what happens is you get very little light that comes in between these homes. And these small, small lots, you end up with nothing but mulch. And you end up, and I took some pictures at some, some spots I'd like to share, where this is just becomes a serious runoff drainage problem. And so, the, the stormwater management ponds in these homes, it just ends up with no light getting in when they're that close. And the same with the trees. So, the, the purpose of getting them and saying we have all this extra open space, it doesn't really solve the runoff issue. It makes it more difficult to keep some of these drains. North Carolina, everybody's talking about now fall spring. We could easily get another freeze and all the moisture we're getting changes that drainage pattern. So, when they only have eight or 10 feet between a house to put a swale to do water, within seven to 10 years, these things don't work anymore. And they're constantly having to deal with putting in subsurface drains or French drains or some other issues to deal with them. So, I think not only is it appropriate from a privacy issue to have a little bit more space, but to make sure that we're, we're looking at what those natural things are going to do because that sod's going to look great for two years. And then that sod is not going to get enough light. You know, North Carolina is land of the longleaf pine, and there is no native grass to North Carolina. So, every piece of grass we get here came from somewhere else.
Crabgrass?
Yep. That one right there came somewhere else too. But, but in terms of turf grass, Zoysia or centipede or fescue or whatever it is. And so, these freeze stalls that we get make all of these swales not work. So, I just think we really need to pay attention, is that big enough? Because you're not, they're going to do their one-year warranty, their 10-year build out or five-year build out, and they're gone. But that house is going to be here for 80 years. And so, it's going to be something that constantly has to done. If it's not done well with the drainage. And if you look at one of those pictures, you'll see what happens. The one that's the back of a town home that has a garage. If you look real close, it's circled. What will happen is we'll build these homes. We'll put all the minimum impervious surface, and the owners are going to come in without a permit and they'll extend that concrete. They'll extend it with pavers. They'll make a patio. And so, we're going to reduce that impervious surface just because that's the nature of the beast. Somebody's going to buy some stepping stones and stick them around their house. So, so having them smaller really creates some, some issues that a town can't complete, I mean, police.
So, when you say smaller, are you talking about the side setbacks, the lot size?
Side setbacks particularly. Those, those, when they're really close in between on there. And when I read all the cluster, it talks about site vistas. You'll go back to Tom's Creek. There wasn't no site vistas in between those houses. They, they were just strictly stuck in there as close. At 35 feet tall with, with, that's, that's our maximum, right, height?
Yes.
So, they could put a pretty tall house there and you can get hardly any light in between that.
So, what do you think about the eight-foot side setback that would put 16 feet between homes?
I, I think that's better. I think 10 to 12 is more ideal. But you're not going to be able to get, you know, much light size, I mean, much home in that size on there.
That could force you to do a bigger lot.
Well, well, I also think if you don't increase the width of the, of the, of the house, of the footprint of the house, then you have more room all around. So. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. Carlton Point, that whole neighborhood destroyed all those creeks back there in that neighborhood. Aside from it being delayed in its original build in, in Wake County, not staying on top of its storm management of that whole development. Even now, with everything almost fully developed, the, the stormwater runoff right now is just appalling. It's destroyed in numerous places, all the creeks back there. So, yeah. I don't know enough about all this stuff to know what numbers work, but all I know is those houses are too close together for the points that he's making, so.
I mean, I think the proposed increases that you've got here are, you know, more than sufficient enough. I mean, a lot of the, what Mr. Hill's bringing up, we, you know, it does, a lot of it, I think, falls back to maintenance of the. back to maintenance of the individual yards by the homeowners. You know, they've, after, most of them are sotted down, developer leaves them, and they have to be maintained by the homeowners once they're there. But I mean, we're increasing, you know, the lot width and the setbacks, you know, I feel like quite a bit on each of those for the cluster.
You can't maintain something that doesn't exist in nature. The grasses we have won't live with that little light. That's the issue. It's not the homeowner. It's nature. You've got to have four to six hours minimum. You're getting two to three on those with them that close together. It's just not going to live. You're just not getting enough. If you look up NC State, they'll tell you six to eight to 12 on Bermuda and high temperatures. So we're getting just a really, really small amount of light. It's not the homeowner. It's nature.
Would you mandate some sort of artificial, like the French drains, if you want to go to that size, there has to be some artificial drainage in that location?
I think that'd be a great solution, and they have to have a subsurface drain installed in there to do that.
But they're not that expensive to do. It's not like you're spending thousands of dollars to put a drain in, but we're not spending thousands of dollars to fix things because you've ran off a lot of water.
Most of these smaller lots, they're padded out, and there's swales between each lot to convey the runoff from the houses, you know, to the street and to the rear for, so that they go to the stormwater management devices on site.
But I think if, again, in between those things, right, there are a couple of years, they overgrown, they fill in, because they're not deep, you can't do something that's going to deepen last, even the ones that are near my house, which are, there used to be three feet, right, because they're the property lines, they're almost gone, so we have to dig them out. Homeowners aren't even going to look at that until it's too late. If I put something artificial in place, the French drains, the little plastic white drains, right, I'm more likely going to keep that clean as a homeowner versus noticing that the indentation is now too shallow than it used to be.
Well, French drain is subsurface.
Well, I say the French drain type of pieces of it, something that you've got some drainage in that spot that keeps it from accumulating and then just running into, I saw the one house, you could see the water lines on the side of the house. One, if you're the homeowner, you've got to fix that, but two, if you don't notice that, where's it going?
A lot of these new developments, if they're going to be clustered, they're going to be maintained by landscape contractors, like I think all the toll, they have one person doing all of that, and they're going to put big machines through there to do it fast, and it's going to get rutted up, and it's just going to end up being these issues. The one right there, one of those is Inside Wade, which is near Trinity Road, near the RBC Center on there, and it's about eight, nine years old, and there are a significant number of issues with that, and they're spending thousands of dollars to remediate that upfront with these, I mean, afterwards with these drains.
Put it in the back when you start.
Yeah, so make it a requirement that you need to have some, you know, drainage means between them.
I think that's starting to get into a whole nother section of the ordinance when we start just trying to design how stormwater is done throughout a neighborhood.
And make the lots water.
Do you mind if I keep these, Steve, or would you like them back?
Not at all. I can email them to you, too.
Okay. Would you like them?
No. I'll email them to you also.
Thank you.
Meredith, when did it go under 8,000 square feet? Because I didn't hear one commissioner say they were okay with lots being under 8,000 square feet, right? But you may have. And what is the 10,000 square feet on here? What is that all about?
We haven't gotten to that one yet. We're looking at residential medium right now.
Okay.
The 10,000 square foot, are we looking at this one, the residential low zoning district cluster options?
Oh, okay.
The by right lot size in residential low is 20,000 square feet, and if you do cluster in residential low, you can go down to 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
And you're not proposing a change on that?
No, no change there at this time. However, when I was looking at the lot size for residential medium and making suggestions for the side and corner setbacks and lot width, I thought it was only fair to make the same sort of change for residential low.
How did you come up with 7,500?
It came to me from the mayor.
This is not going to be a short conversation at the commissioner's meeting, I will tell you that, because that's a big concern for several commissioners.
And also was a suggestion I had made when we talked about clusters before, because if you look at the residential low scenario where it's 20,000 square feet, it gets cut in half for the cluster. So if our by right lot size in medium is 15,000, it's following the same pattern of going in half.
I hear you. All righty. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add my comment. You know how I feel about clusters. It's just not a product that I get excited about. But we're trying to find a happy medium. I know as soon as developers see this product, they're going to jump on it. It is going to be the way. I think the numbers in blue, according to my sheet here, what's been crossed out and what's in blue is moving in the right direction. Am I happy? I'm content, maybe. I'm not thrilled, I'm not excited about it. But that said, as I said, I think we probably do need to revise that a little bit more, because it's going to be a product that they're going to constantly go to, and we're going to have these discussions like we had with previous developers as well. We want to make sure we are creating some sort of happy medium for them, some sort of compromise. But yeah, that's all I have to say.
So it sounds like you might be more of like what Commissioner Medley was saying, like something a little higher than 7,500 square feet?
Right. One of the things I wanted to say, sorry, it just came to me, was one of our board members in here, Mr. Safety, when it comes to the fire department, how do we get ladders and equipment through those sidings? Do we have to cut down fences? Do we have to cut down something just to get a little go-kart in between there to carry off, whatever? Those are always my concern, is we have to focus on the safety and health of our community. So if first responders can't get by there, I don't care about tearing up the turf, but if they can't even squeeze through that little, whatever, that could become a public safety concern. So that's my concern there. Those are my own concern.
I have one other question, I'm sorry. In 2007, in the villages, on Redford Place, there was a fire.
There was a fire, and it dominoed. It dominoed over, yes.
Wouldn't that be a concern with the houses being this close?
It would be a concern for me.
With the heat of a fire, you have to be 50 yards or better, right? Because you're going to, when those houses go, you can see there's one over in Heritage that went, and only went partial, and the house next to it was already started smoking. Right? It's, and they were 15 feet between the two. Getting closer, great, but if you want a fire concern with houses, you're going to have to move them much further. And I'm not Donnie, per expert, but if you've ever been close to a house fire, you, they're hot. I mean.
I guess what I'm asking is, something was said about windows, reflection, sun, and that caused the issue, but so the closer they are together, I'm not saying houses are not going to be built close together, but I'm saying when they're that close, aren't the chances, statistically speaking, isn't that, doesn't that, is that a better chance of these homes catching on fire when they're that close?
I'm not a building code expert or a fire safety expert.
You know, like with the windows, have you seen that? Is that a, should that be a concern?
They had reflective windows that caused issues with siding on the next houses because it reflected, right? Because you warped it over time. But as you pointed out, the houses are that close together, you're not getting sun in the first place.
I'm giving them much light in there.
Right? The bigger concern is if you put, like the one they had down here, they had a lot of pine straw in between because they couldn't grow grass.
That's combustible.
Pine straw is extremely flexible.
And I think maybe, I know there were different situations with this house, something may have caught off fire, I don't know if anyone here.
Pine straw issues on a lot of these slab houses.
I thought there was an ordinance for that, or is it only commercial?
No, on a townhome, you don't, but on a condo, you do. Townhome in Raleigh, because you have individual lot, you know, between, you own part of the land.
So you can use pine straw against the building? Because I thought you had to use them.
No, you can on there. It's on the slab construction and vinyl siding where the issues were. If we're going to have them 18 inches, you know, of stem wall or foundation, we'd have less issue than the ones that burned up where there's a slab construction, and they were right there at it, maybe even piled up onto the side potentially, yeah, on the siding.
I think that was a little bit of a perfect storm also. It was an extremely windy day that helped it jump from house to house.
Yep.
I don't know, but I'm just asking that, if this is going to be the norm, if you all are going to vote on this, it's still going to come to the board, that there's some precautions that are set in place to help minimize the windows, the window being an issue, the fire. I don't, I didn't think they used what you had just mentioned. I thought they were no longer allowed to use the.
Pine straw?
Yes. I thought that was, no, but I don't know, that may have been something I just heard.
Some multifamily condominiums or apartments, but not on townhomes. They couldn't get it passed because they had individual, they still had two or three feet of, you know, space around them that belonged to them, so.
I think some individual municipalities have banned it. I don't know about Roseville. Has Roseville banned the use of pine straw around homes?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I think that should be a topic of conversation at a later date, because you have your agenda, but that's just a concern for me, and I just look to you all because.
Well, commissioners are lawmakers, so you guys can bring it up as well.
Right. I just look for answers and opinions from those who are out there and see this, and, you know, and Meredith as well, that.
This would have probably been a good one for Donnie, he could have given some stats on how many houses, how many house fires have gone from house to house because of the proximity. I know it's been a couple, and they're always high-profile, but I think as a whole, the fire department does a really good job of keeping those contained once they do have.
The siding's supposed to now have readings on how long it can sustain.
It more melts than burns.
And with Roseville not allowing vinyl siding, I think the cementitious boards and other things are going to not be as combustible as that vinyl was, hopefully.
David did say something about the vinyl being a contributor to the spread, but I think it might have been a chemical, too, I don't know, but I just thank you all for your knowledge.
It has a low flash point, so it goes up quick.
All right. Thank you.
So I'm hearing some, it feels like I'm hearing some positive feedback on these proposed changes and some other feedback that maybe it's not quite gone, changed, changing enough.
I would ask the, our board, you know, do we want to do something at least now so that there's something changed in the interim? And I would feel like the side setback, instead of eight feet being corrected from five, could go to 10, and the French drains be added, would be my suggestion based on.
I would just open it to say artificial drain.
Or artificial drainage, yeah.
Versus natural or landscape drain.
About engineered.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. However, yeah, but those are the two that I'm hearing sounds like, because if we do that, and even though, you know, Commissioner Medley feels the 7,500 might be something that the town commissioners might push back, we have that number right now, and I still think it's better than 5,000, and since we can do this every single month until we get it right. I just think getting something moving forward would be better than leaving it where it is and opening ourselves to another development coming in in the meantime while we get it right. So that would be my suggestion.
I personally feel like 10 might be a little much on the side yard. I mean, the by right allowed is 12, so, you know, part of doing a cluster is getting some reductions in setbacks, lot widths, and lot area, and you're really not getting much.
You're getting 40% more. If you get 12 minus 10 times two, each house, it's 40%.
Yeah, a two-foot reduction.
Yeah, out of, from 10 to 12 is 20, and times that by each house side by side, that's 40%.
That's only 20 for each lot, though.
Each lot in total, it's 40% more, or whatever, so.
With that 50-foot lot width and 10-foot side yard, you're keeping the house sizes down to a 30-foot house box that they can, a maximum width they could build of a house.
There's no depth. And that's the thing I think about when somebody says the narrow housing, I always think of like the Charleston houses or the Norland homes, right, where they do a shotgun row. You get a small, thin house, but it goes back pretty deep, and in the back, you've got the common area courtyard. Well, that to me is a cluster home. Like, that to me would be attractive, because you're like, oh, I got a smaller home, got a common courtyard area in the back that we can all sit, which is the purpose, but the builder can put a lot of homes in a small area but still have an open space. I'm with you when you see some of the plans that I've seen, it's essentially 50 houses in a row in a little spot, and they do the math, right? And they say, okay, well, look, we have all this open area. It's not, not the way I think the clusters were intended at least. That's the other part of that cluster discussion I wonder if we could have, is you can't have more than a certain number of homes.
In a cluster.
Adjacent to each other.
Yeah.
Like, you have to break it up. You could do, let's say if it was 10.
A road or an open space area?
Open space, road, but again, you could say, if you say if it's 50 and 50, right, so you have 100 homes in this one road that goes across, versus saying, okay, you can't do, I'm making up a number, right, 10, you have to break up, 10, and then you have to break up.
Well, the town has a block with lengths in their ordinance.
We do.
So there has to be, so you can't have a 1,000-foot-long street with nothing but houses. It would have to have an intersection road to break those blocks up.
I'm making up numbers, but the one I was looking at, like, a lot of those were, it was three rows, two rows of houses back to back, and then three of those rows are deep, right? So it was packed a good 100 homes in a square, which I don't think is the intent of a cluster or the desired sight lines you're looking at a cluster. It was just packing homes into a small location and then using the non-area as a offset, which I don't think is the intent.
Yeah, I don't, that's not, yeah.
Because you could build some attractive houses that South Carolina, row style, do a few, do a few, do a few, and break it up, and you have plenty of open space if you break it up, and not just great big one-spot, open spot. And that'd be fairly attractive to some folks.
So what I'd like to do with the comments I'm hearing from you all, I made some notes, and of course, I love having the video, so we can go back and re-watch. When I take this to the town board for presentation and then legislative public hearing, I'd like to include, obviously, a series of bullet points with your feedback, saying some members believe the side setback should be 10 feet and some were okay with 8 feet, and then let the town board deliberate through that and have all of your comments and feedback while doing so.
Commissioner Medley, was it that the other commissioners wanted this size bigger than 7,500?
I'm not going to say every one of them did, because I didn't have a conversation.
But some of them?
Yes. That could have been one other commissioner or two. You know what I mean? I'm not saying everybody, because I didn't have this discussion with each of them, but there was one that was pretty adamant about the size, at the very least.
And I may not know that number. I just, I know everyone was, it seemed like everyone was uncomfortable with the 5,000 square feet.
Because we didn't know where it came from, and it seems like even with you saying that it was half, which I understood it to be, I think going into this cluster type of zoning, am I saying that right? I don't think there was a full understanding that this is what you can get, because we were under the impression in one of our meetings that nothing would be less than 10,000.
10.
Really? Okay.
And then, next you know, we have a developer saying.
But I can budge, we can budge, 8.
Okay. I didn't.
It was 10.
It was a long conversation, I don't know which meeting it was, but.
Okay.
They're all long.
It was in January, 2020.
So I don't think that understanding was conveyed to us that this is what can happen in a cluster, just so you know.
Sure. And of course, I wasn't here to experience the joy of going through the ordinance update process.
So I think if we have a better understanding in just listening to you all, you know, like your opinions on what could happen, what may not happen, or, like, I don't even know how you came up with that 40% so quick from 10 minus 12 minus 10. I didn't get it, but, you know, something like, I know math, but I think just hearing what you all are sharing, because you're involved in this, at least, you know, Mike, I know you are from the surveyor perspective, I'm correct, right? Okay, good. I don't want to be wrong on live TV. And I know Mr. Hill, he knows a lot about landscaping and, you know, the different thing. All of you know something, don't get me wrong, but to hear, we don't hear all this in our meetings. Meredith does a really good job of recapping. All of you know something. Don't get me wrong. But to hear, we don't hear all this in our meetings. I mean, Meredith does a really good job of recapping what was said. But at the end of the day, you all are not sitting there for us to ask these questions to, and sometimes I feel like we hit her from all sides with questions. But it's really good, like you said, Derek, to change it to something now and to let the conversation continue. We can build on that.
Right, absolutely.
That is real small.
That's exactly what I was hoping for, to address the concerns from the town board and the planning board, at least have some improvement, and then we obviously can continue to work through and improve the whole section.
Well, could we go to nine-foot side setbacks and 8,000 square feet and make a motion that we adopt that, you know?
With engineered draining?
With engineered draining.
I'm writing it down. I would defer to.
You want to, want a motion?
Yeah, was that a motion?
Actually, I don't think, I, I'd rather not have a motion yet. I'd rather go, I, I've, I've made a note. I'd like to go through all of the LDO round four.
Have a motion for all three combined.
And then do a motion at the end, if that's okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay.
That works.
The last item, TA 23, 2303, has to do with vape shops. And in our ordinance right now, Section 5, Principal Use Table, we have a series of commercial uses. This is just an excerpt from that table. I picked the section where it would fit in alphabetically. So you can see, we're proposing to add vape and tobacco store as a separate commercial use, and it would be permitted in general commercial, commercial highway, and general industrial. And the use standards to go with that, I mentioned when introducing this package, that there was some feedback from the Wake County School Board that they would like vape shops to be at least 1,000 feet away from schools. Okay, I can't wait to see what you have to say.
I, I, you have to be 18 to purchase it. So if I'm an adult and I have the right to go purchase it, why are you making me walk 1,001 feet?
From a school?
From a school. I mean, it, it, it's not like, oh, it's next to a, you know, a middle school that they're going to go over and grab some vapes because they can't. So to me, this is a feel-good, somebody's made him happy and say, look, we kept them 1,000 feet away. It makes no sense whatsoever. Sorry.
Up for comments.
And that's my exact point, because you weren't with the school board when they had this conversation, neither was I. So I'm curious too as to why, but, you know.
I, I would suspect the reason why that all came up was, was going all the way back to, to the no drugs in the 80s thing, where they didn't want children to be influenced visually by the appearance of something that close to schools and of the such. That would be my perspective. Well, again, I'm not, I'm not saying it's fright, I'm just saying that would, that would be.
I, I know why, right? And it's a political feel-good story of this kind of stuff. The kid's going to drive by on the bus, they're going to see it, they're going to drive by with their mom, and they're going to see those type of things. I just, I don't, to me, it's, sure, go ahead, but.
Yeah, I hear you.
Like David.
Yourself on the back for a nice.
Like Davidian said, maybe you're, you're not excited about this one, like he's not excited about the cluster one.
The, the other thing I would actually ask, ask on, on the way this gets worded is whether or not we should, at this point, find the wording that would incorporate CBD and THC distributions as well. Just because even if it's not something that the state or the federal government warms up to right now, it's certainly something that I think we should have in place for when and if they do. So we don't have to revisit it when that comes.
Any other?
I think my only comment was in the, under T, where it's vape and tobacco store description, Item C. You put the establishment being no closer than 1,000 feet to another. It just had vape store. I'm just wondering, should we include vape slash tobacco?
Probably.
And then maybe add, as Mr. Precision said, the CBD and what was the other one?
THC. I don't know what, whether we call that some other sort of, you know, drug, not, non-pharmaceutical drug store. I don't know if there's a legal term that's being used these days to.
Then you could, you could go to an herbal shop.
Yeah.
Dispensary.
Dispensary, yeah, yeah, that's probably the, the appropriate term. Vape, tobacco, and dispensary.
Tea, teas, teas and herb, drink that. Got to ban some tea shops. I, I got, I, I'm just violently opposed to these type of things because they really are just not, they, they grow in scope too quickly. And you got a tobacco shop over here, he's a business, he pays taxes. Just because the school is, is, you know, 980 feet away doesn't mean he should not have the right to have a business there.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I'm just, I'm adding my comment for the sake of encapsulating all the same types of.
I understand where you have the piece, but it grows because you say, like you say, it's a dispensary. It's a dispensary of what? Is, because if I'm, there's the tea shop in, in Wake Forest, that's herbs technically, right? If I'm an herb shop down the street selling chives, that's herbs.
I'm assuming with adding and revising this, that the, the definition of a vape tobacco slash CBD, the definition of that would be updated in the UDO as well.
That's a great suggestion. I, I have not written that out yet, so we can certainly do that.
And I, and they mentioned the existing store, have any, any existing stores would be grandfathered in, wouldn't have to.
Yeah, but again, my point being if they built something near the school, because that would include charter schools too, right?
Any, any kind of school.
So you got the little school over here by the CVS, so that whole strip of, of, of retail shops where the pizza shops and all that stuff is, we just got rid of businesses that might go there.
1,000 feet might not be as far as you think.
But it's pretty close. Let's talk about the post office, right? That'd be about 1,000.
It's, it's pushing.
So wait, what happens when Publix and that whole development is created? So are you, at that point, these?
If, if a school comes after the vape store, then, then they.
Well, you've got the charter across the street. That's probably too far away.
That is too far?
I think that's over 1,000. That'll probably be over 1,000. You'd have to grab a measuring.
But if a vape store opened and then a charter school built across the street from them, they would, they would be grandfathered at that point.
So the, the Publix point, what if you have a grocery store that dispenses that? The Publix sells liquor in Florida. I just got back, and they have their liquor stores right next. Yeah, they do. So, you know, what happens if they have a vape store as part, or they sell those products within that grocery store?
I think the definition says on established that it's a retail outlet specializing in the selling.
Specializing, okay.
So I think it kind of defines it.
Okay. So that would answer your question, that Publix.
Yeah, it would, but people are creative. Keep that in mind too. They may not specialize in it.
A water pipe store.
That's what we're here for. Change the rules when they do.
I hear you. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying not to say anything throughout your meeting, because it's the planning board's meeting, but some of the stuff is making me like, oh my gosh. It's making me think, you know, it makes you think, but.
That's good.
Now I think we need t-shirts. That's us. Better not wear t-shirts after you come up with a rule like that and walk down the street.
And I know we think, I like the, the comment, right, defining it, because there's a few tobacco-ists, like really old-fashioned tobacco-ists, right? Not what we're thinking with the vape shops and these type of things. But there's like a good place in William that sells cigars and pipe tobacco, right? That's a nice place.
So Pipes by George on Hillsborough Street in Raleigh's been there for at least 40 years, and they sell cigars and tobacco and apparatus.
I just think it creeps into the place that you're not, we don't want to be at. Personally. It's not an adult entertainment, it's a place which I could completely understand. Right? I don't understand.
Do we need to motion anything here?
Looking for a motion for you all to either recommend approval or denial of LDO round four, which includes the notification distance, the cluster updates, and the vape and tobacco shop. And I, I have made notes of all your comments.
I think it should be three different votes.
Three different, okay, we can.
And we could do it concurrently and go one, two, three. This one, yay. This one, yay. This one, no.
Okay, so for text amendment 2301, that's the notification distance for.
Can we make, can we make one motion to vote separately on three different amendments? Okay, we don't have to make a motion?
Just take, just, I think just have a motion on each individual item. So if you make a motion, just make it on the, the first item of the LDO round.
Then I'll make a motion to vote on TA 23 dash 01 as amended by the board recommendations.
All right, we have a motion for TA 21 dash 03.
I'll second it.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next up would be TA 21, TA 23 dash 02.
And that was the cluster updates.
Cluster.
And the note I made on that was Mr. Hill suggested making the side setback change to nine feet and including engineered drainage and, let me see.
8,000 square feet.
8,000.
And 8,000 square foot minimum lot instead of 7,500.
And you're going to mention to the commissioners that there was much discussion?
Yes. That's my plan. Trust me, if she doesn't, I will.
01 was the notification letters.
Yes. You got it.
Second one is the.
Cluster updates.
The cluster updates.
All right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the 2302 amendment, given the three conditions of the nine-foot side setback, the 8,000 square foot minimum lot size, and the engineered drainings.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, up next would be TA 23 dash 03.
Vape and tobacco stores.
Is there a motion for this one?
Sure. I make a motion, we vote on TA 23 dash 03.
Motion for approval?
I'm sorry? Approval, I'm going to vote for denial, but I'm going to say ask for approval and let people vote as they want. But I want to deny it. I'm, I'm going to say nay on my own vote.
You're making the motion to recommend approval.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, two. All those opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Three opposed. That one is denied, or not approved.
Can I just say that that's a good thing because it leaves, it leaves it open for more discussion? Okay, because I got a little nervous there. All right.
All good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Onto Item C, communications. First up is the planning director report.
Excellent. So I have quite a few updates for you all on the work you've done over the past several months. I'm still, I still have a slide here for your September 2022 meeting, because 503 South Main Street is on the March 7th Town Board Agenda. That is the case where they went back to the draw, the small drawing board and added some conditions to prohibit certain uses. And this is the property right across the street, the toy storage site. So that will be on the March 7th Town Board Agenda. And Parker Ridge was at the February 7th Town Board Meeting, and it was continued to the March 7th meeting. So the applicant can potentially add a condition about a road access from the project out to Young Street. So that will be on tap March 7th. At your December 2022 meeting, we looked at 207 North Main Street, and that is the shopping center down at the eastern end of Main Street that was zoned, general industrial, and you all recommended approval of that. And that was approved by the town board to change the zoning to general commercial on February 7th. And Tom's Creek, I get calls and emails about Tom's Creek almost daily. So what's going on with Tom's Creek? Toll Brothers is no longer involved in the case. The property owner is carrying the case forward and is reworking the concept plan at this time, and staff is expecting them to resubmit the concept plan sometime soon. So as of right now, we do not have that case scheduled for a planning board meeting or town board meeting that is TBD. And then Jones Dairy Storage, you all recommended approval of that, and that went to the February 7th Town Board Meeting, and that was continued because a resident, nearby resident had an issue with a mailing and hadn't seen the case and had quite a bit of feedback. So in order for the applicant to address this resident's feedback, the applicant did another neighborhood meeting and continued the case to March 7th. So we'll see that with the town board on March 7th. At your January meeting, you recommended approval of 503 South Main Street, and I did mention that will be at the March 7th meeting. And then we started work on LDO round four, which we continued this evening. And for the January development report, this is an excerpt from your report. And you can see that four new single-family detached permits were issued in January, one for Carlton Point, one for Granite Crest Phase 3C, one for Perry Farms, and one for Regency at Heritage Phase 3. And permitting is, was lower in January 2023 versus January 2022. And next, training needs. I know Commissioner Medley, you asked me about training. So at our last meeting, we talked about starting the March Planning Board Meeting at 6:00 PM so we could have some training before our regular agenda. And I just want to check in and see if that still works for you all, and suggest that we start training with talking about the development process in Roseville and where the planning board fits into that. And I think seeing a continuum of, you know, start to finish and the touch point where you are, I thought that could be helpful for new members. That's just a suggestion. If you have other ideas or something you're looking for, I'd love to hear from you.
I think that would be a great starting point.
Okay.
Is everyone available at 6 o'clock start on the March?
What is it?
It'll be.
It's March, the same date. It's, it's, you know, March 27th, Monday, March 27th.
Okay.
6:00 PM.
Did you talk to Kelly about the eats?
Oh, I'll make it happen.
That's right. If not, I will.
Okay.
Because they're going to be coming off from work.
Yes, so we'll have some food.
I have a question on Parker's Ridge.
Yes.
Has there been any renderings yet on how that road is going to be connecting to Young Street through the town property, given the fact that I haven't seen a plan for how that property is going to be developed?
With their condition, I'll be working on that staff report tomorrow and Wednesday, and that will be published on the website on Thursday. But what the applicant has submitted to me so far, it writes out that they'll build the road from the property to Young Street. And there's a diagram of the town property with a rectangle across the bottom of it that shows this is the corridor where we anticipate the road being built.
And, and is that going to be the same road that was expected to be used to access the town property for the various things that were going to be built on it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not going to, it's not changing or making us change the way we were looking at that property to begin with?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Were we originally thinking of going through that property anyway, or were we? Okay, okay.
As far as my understanding goes.
And then is there any, with respect to Tom's Creek, with that change in, in direction, are they starting from scratch? Or are they essentially making revisions to what's already been done, or is there any indication as to where, where the new direction is going to lead?
I haven't seen the revised concept plan yet, so as soon as that comes in, it'll.
You'll know that, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have a better idea of what's going on.
Has that person then been either in touch with what's been happening in these meetings and have understood the complaints from residents, businesses, and the discussions here to have considered that, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
In those plans?
Yes.
So that we don't have to go through a lot of stuff all over again?
Right, right. I know of, what, Mr. Anderson has been working with the property owner. He has shared with me, he's worked with property owners and wants to continue to do so, and I think he's paying close attention to what you all are saying.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, anything else? Any other questions about the world of planning in Roseville?
One other thing on the, the Jonesville property that I think you had up here earlier, the one that's down by Mitchell Mill and Jonesville Road. Is there going to be a crosswalk put in by that bridge where the greenway is going to come in from both sides of the road? Or is there still no certainty on what's going to happen with, with that? Because it's going to not make a lot of sense to have a greenway stub out on both sides of the road and not have an official crosswalk right there.
That, I'm, I'm not sure. I know the developer is working on the major subdivision preliminary plat right now, and that has not been submitted. I've just gotten a few questions about that, so it's something we'll look at when that plat comes in.
I got some new business that I'd like to just kind of bring up as it goes to these traffic studies. traffic studies.
Okay.
So last week, I came to downtown Roseville, and I came at 2:55 and sat in traffic in front of Roseville Middle School, and at 3:07, I was at the same spot. And then I just heard on the news that there's a Roseville grandparent that is in a disagreement with Wake County because Wake County is now paying $25 a day to any parent who drives their children to school because there's a shortage of...
Bus driver shortage.
Bus drivers. So this afternoon, I had to go to Ed Joyner's Body Shop to pick up a car. And so from my house on Centaur Road, I can go two ways. I can come up Burlington Mill, down Main Street, hit Avery, and then down Jones Dairy, or I can go through Forestville over to Friendship Chapel and back Jones Dairy. Each one of those goes past two to three schools. So if we're going to keep doing these pieces and we're having a shortage of bus drivers, we really need to pay attention to this traffic because it took 20 minutes. If there was an emergency vehicle that needed to get by there, there's not nearly enough, quote, "storage" for all those cars turning into the middle school. The same thing is happening when I came this afternoon. I did go Heritage High School letting out. So when we're doing these traffic impact analysis, it was four to six is the state standard, I think. So I think Roseville needs to make sure we're paying attention to this stuff, you know, we want to do the minimum or we want to have the gold standard and something better. We want to have a best practice, but there's just, you know, there's no, once the Main Street vision, we have Granite Falls Connect, I think that might have, you know, helped a little bit, but it still wouldn't have done anything for me getting to my house that afternoon. And so the EMS and all that is, you know, would have to come from here, the other one to Wake Forest. So, anyway, just a thought. I don't know if anybody's heard the case on the grandparents and the 25, they owe $1,700. They're fighting Wake County. They haven't been paid. It's 25 bucks a day.
I haven't heard that, but I live beside the middle school, and the traffic you're talking about is every afternoon and for about a 20-minute stretch there. And I don't know if that's something that the commissioners could ask the school, but a lot of it has to do with the parents getting there so early to pick their kids up before the school ever lets out. As soon as the bell rings and the stars, cars start moving, they clear right on out. But they're there for a half an hour before the bell lets out, and they back all the way up into Burlington Mills in each direction, and that's not the only school.
That's my wife pick them up when back in middle school. She had to be near the front so she could get the kids.
Right.
So you get there early, otherwise you're going to be the back line.
I don't know if the school could not allow people to get there that early.
Honestly, I think the school needs to, the schools need to consider that in the design, right, is to have that commuter lot that's ready to go and be able to put more cars in that because more parents are driving their kids to school for various different reasons, right? And so you go Jones Dairy, you go by Heritage, you go by any of those schools, and those cars are 200 long.
Yep.
Even the high school wouldn't pick up at the high school, and that thing goes all the way down that long driveway, and that's a long driveway, and they're packed. And then they're backed up all the way up onto Roseville Road.
Code reds at Roseville High are not fun for a lot of reasons.
Why? You can make it. It's only a mile to the house.
I just come down Quarry Road, that's what I do.
All right, any other business?
I do want to ask Meredith, has there been a date set yet for the closure on East Young Street?
I am not sure.
Okay. Because that's what Kelly said, too. He said he hadn't heard anything a couple of weeks ago. So I was just wondering, because they're closing it down and they're detouring it, and I guess they're going to give us a plan?
Have you all visited the new Main Street project website?
Yep, I have. I got that email.
Is it on there?
I'm hoping things like that will, I mean, it makes sense that stuff like that would be on there, but I haven't...